Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 25th at 6:00 PM and we are in Charlie Benson Memorial Hall. Kim, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Guy Liotti.
Here.
Councilmember Montel.
Here.
Councilmember Gensel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Mayor Kurt.
Here.
Thank you. So, a couple of items. Item 11B will be pulled this evening pending further information. And additionally, the social media policy has been updated. There were a couple of phrases that have since been added from when it was distributed, I think, last Thursday. So, there's copies of those out in the hallway if you'd like to see those. So, on that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Hallam is out of town this week, so we have a special elder that is here for this evening's invocation. So, I'd like to introduce Honorable Mary Ann Carbone, who is the Mayor of Seaside. And she is...
San City.
Excuse me. San City. And she is a Schumach Elder and Community Leader. Join me in welcoming her.
Greetings and thank you, everyone, for the nice welcome to your city. My name's Mary Ann Carbone and I'm a lifelong resident of the Monterey Peninsula. I have families, members, who have been here for generations and I am of Tumash descent. It's an honor to be here today. Reverend Hallam asked if... He told me he was going to be out of town and he asked if I could come and I had an invitation from your mayor, so thank you. And I'd like to offer a prayer and blessing during the summer solstice. So, this is a time of the year when we reflect our personal growth and the meaning of the seizing season. June 21st was the longest day of sunshine and the shortest night. And it's a time when seeds are planted into the earth and into our souls. It's a time of cleansing and renewal and a time of love and growth. I'm passing out, going around to you. There's some little bundles. They're tobacco ties. They're also called prayer ties. Therefore, if you have intentions or good intentions or you want to burn it or, you know, there's a lot of prayers that have gone into that little bundle and they've been in a lot of ceremonies. So, I'd like to offer a prayer in our Tumash language. And I'll say the words and then I'll translate. (Inaudible) our grandfather above. You see me and you see the people. (Inaudible) you bring the moon and the sun. We love the sky. We love the land. We love the ocean. You watch over the heavens. You watch over the land. You watch over the ocean. You watch over the people. We believe and so we pray. And I pray that to Creator and our God above, that you watch over the city council and their families and the city of Delray Oaks and guide them all with the best decisions for a healthy, prosperous, and safe city. Since you have a short meeting, I guess I'll go ahead and make this a little bit longer. So, I'll add a little song and this is a welcome song. Goes like this. And now a prayer to Creator, Mother Earth, and the Board of Directions. Oh, (Inaudible) Creator, we are gathered here to give thanks and honor. Oh, (Inaudible). Oh, Grandmother, who taught us mother, the ones who gives us shelter and sustains us with nourishment, let us give you thanks and treat you with respect. Oh, (Inaudible). To the east, a place of the springtime, life, the breath of sunrise, and a place of new beginnings. (Inaudible). To the south, a place where the land meets the water, a time of the fall, a time of perspective, knowledge for the future. Oh, (Inaudible). To the west, (Inaudible). Creator, may we give thanks and honor to the ancestor, the spiritual world, and who taught our mother. Oh, (Inaudible). To the north, a place of wisdom and a time to remember the ancestors, the wise ones, the lost ones, a time of the winter solstice. Oh, (Inaudible). And I'll close with a song. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's time for public comments. Anyone that wishes to address the city council on any item not on the agenda, please state who you are, where you're from, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kurt. Councilmembers, staff, friends, and neighbors. I'm Molly Evans and the Chair of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Board. Several people have expressed concern to me about what would happen if Calan misses its September milestone that was proposed by the State Water Resources Control Board as condition of the season's assistance extension. The fears are people will be subject to rationing, that's what I have to tell you. So, I'd like to set this... Set the record straight and clarify what ramifications are for this milestone. If this September milestone, which is starting construction on any desalination plant feature, is missed, there could be an immediate reduction of 1,000 acre feet in the amount that will be pumped from the Harmel River. If you look at the amount that's been pumped from the river in 2018 for customer demand and assume that that holds constant in future years, we'll have quite a bit of room under the effective diversion limit and no punitive measures will come into effect. In fact, we would have almost 400 acre feet of breathing room there. If the second milestone is missed, which would be in September of 2020, and that milestone is drilling the source wells and more significant progress on the desalination plant, a second 1,000 acre foot production could take place. Assuming that that 2018 value of production for customer demand remains constant, Calan can still take advantage of the carryover credit that it has earned through this community's outstanding conservation efforts and the demand can be met without any ramifications. Assuming the state actually does issue a reduction of 1,000 acre feet per year for those missed milestones, if the Calan... Calan can petition the state not to issue that if they can prove that the error was not the fault of Calan, the Water Management District, or the Mayor's Water Authority. So, it's possible that that would not be implemented anyway. If any ramifications do take place, the first step is to encourage voluntary conservation, additional voluntary conservation. If that isn't working, then the next step is to move into penalty rates. But each step takes time and it's time to analyze. And it's a sum for the year, so it's not going to happen instantaneously. So, what I'm here to tell you is that this community has been outstanding in its conservation efforts and that has resulted in significant breathing room under the season disorder. And while that is the case, we still need to remain vigilant, of course. But I wanted to let you know, if you do hear somebody say that if the September milestone, that rationing will be immediately implemented, that is completely false. That's my three minutes. I'm happy to talk to you about this further if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
My name is Janice.
And I'm Judy Lehman. I'm a former Director on the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District and I did represent this area when, I believe, it was Mayor Russell was involved with Delray Oaks. So, we are here to give you a little bit more of a lighthearted look at water because we know it's a very serious subject and it kind of loses people in detail. So, please bear with us while we give you a little bit of the lightheartedness. Do you really believe that the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District spends millions of dollars yet has produced no new water?
Despite the voters trading down the district's dam project in 1995, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District persisted in its goal of creating new water. From the expansion of the Carrota Well and the creation of the Pebble Beach Reformations Project, through the establishment of the Aquifer Storage and Recovery and Pure Water Monterey Projects, the Water Management District is responsible for over 7,000 acre feet of new water supply for the Monterey Peninsula. Or 66% of current consumer demand. The number should increase when data from new local water projects such as the one of the Pacific Grove become available. In just four years, the district has been awarded $575,000 in grants to help facilitate six new water supply projects.
Do you really believe there is less water available today than when the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District was created?
We use less water. In 1976, the year before the district was created, the Peninsula used 16,000 acre feet a year. Last year, it was 9,000.
Do you really believe that the public voted overwhelmingly to disband the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District?
In June 1978, the public voted overwhelmingly to create the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. In 2002, the city of Monterey placed the advisory measure on its ballot to dissolve Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, which the voters of that city did not approve... Did approve. The rest of the Monterey Peninsula did not participate.
Do you really believe the Taxpayers Association is fighting to protect the rights of taxpayers in its battle with the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District over its water supply charge?
The Taxpayers Association actually first lost in Superior Court and then lost again in the Court of Appeals. Both attempts cost the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District constituents and taxpayers almost $250,000 of legal expenses.
Do you really believe that tiered water rates are the invention of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District and that the Water District recently told the CPUC that rates should stay as they are after the desalination plant is built?
Tiered rates are a best management practice supported overwhelmingly by the PUC, the State Water Action Plan.
Do you really believe there's no question that the rates will go up if the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District is put in charge?
Where's the evidence? Our rates are going up now and they're not even in charge.
And do you really believe that no other community has won the eminent domain cases?
I will list of 490 other communities around. 87% of the United States has public water. We can do it too. There's Haynes, Cottonwood, Star Valley. In California, there's Modesto, Castilla Lake, Montero, Bellflower, San Lorenzo, Chapel Gales, Topo City, and more. I've got it all here. Public water management.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Any other public comment? Please.
Last and least, also, I have some pretty impressive implication and I'm a really good dad. So, here comes my little three minutes where...
Can you tell us who you are?
Susan Lush. I'm a new homeowner in Delray Oaks. Very happy to be here. I apologize ahead of time for being this, but it's the only way I could get my three minutes wired in because otherwise I can't... I guess. So, tonight would have been the hearing of the appeal that my husband and I have filed objecting to the use of six-foot vinyl panel fencing at Five Pondale. It is no longer on the agenda because the city manager and attorney decided that the homeowner of Five Pondale never had to submit an application, so she withdrew it and therefore our appeal is moved, as apparently are the recommendations made by the planning commission. And she has begun constructing her vinyl fence. This is not directed at the homeowner of Five Pondale. I'm here to raise the issue of the parameters of vinyl fencing in Delray Oaks in general. It is one thing to erect a three-foot picket fence in a front yard, as has been done previously and approved by the planning commission. It's an entirely different matter to erect six-foot vinyl panels, some placed on a three-foot retaining wall, in full view of the public. In 1953, when the city was incorporated, consideration was not given to the use of vinyl fencing in our neighborhood because it didn't always exist. However, with the advent of solid vinyl panels as a reality, it is time to determine what, if any, kind of vinyl fencing has a place in Delray Oaks. My understanding is that the rule is you can put whatever kind of fencing you want on your side and backyards. If someone is bordering a side or backyard, doesn't care for six-foot vinyl panels, they can build a fence on their side of the property and do not have to look at the vinyl. However, for corner lots such as Five Pondale, their side yards are visible to the public, both driving and walking by, and to all their neighbors. In this type of situation, there's a possibility of solid vinyl panels standing six to nine feet from ground level, visible to the public. To many, this look is not cohesive with the existing aesthetics of Delray Oaks. Even the architect who built this building that we're in made a comment that he believed that vinyl fencing has no place, does not fit in in Delray Oaks. This council needs to determine what, if any, vinyl fencing will be allowed in Delray Oaks and revisit what can be constructed on the corner lot side yards since they are seen by the public and should fall within the same or similar parameters as a front yard. I hope this issue will be addressed before there are other plastic panels erected because the precedent is now being set without following guidelines or any opinion rendered by this council and, I believe, to the detriment of the Delray Oaks community. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Any other public comments about anything not on the agenda? All right, we'll close public comments. The next item is a proclamation about LGBTQ+ Pride Month that I would like to read. Proclamation, LGBTQ+ Pride Month, June 2019. Whereas June is a time to celebrate our dynamic lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning LGBTQ+ community, raise awareness of quality services and foster a dialogue to promote a healthy, safe, and prosperous community for all. And whereas California state law addresses discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying towards LGBTQ+, there have been numerous studies indicating the inequities experienced by the LGBTQ+ community, including poverty, homelessness, school harassment, physical assault, domestic violence, hate crimes, mental health issues, and substance abuse concerns. And whereas studies suggest that LGBTQ+ youth are at a higher risk for substance use, sexually transmitted diseases, cancer, cardiovascular diseases, obesity, bullying, isolation, rejection, anxiety, depression, and suicide as compared to the general population, and a 2011 Institute of Medicine report found that the disparities in both mental and physical health that are seen between LGBTQ+ and heterosexual and nongender variant youth are influenced largely by their experiences of stigma and discrimination during the development of their sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas LGBTQ+ people in the United States have made and continue to make vital contributions to the United States and to the world in every aspect, and whereas by recognizing Pride Month, we affirm our commitment to support other policies, practices, and curricula that honor and respect this special month to inspire equity, create alliances, celebrate diversity, and establish safe communities. Now, therefore, be... Is proclaimed that I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim June 2019 LGBTQ+ Pride Month. I call upon our public officials and all people of Delray Oaks to observe this month to support the rights, freedoms, and equal treatment of all individuals and families in our community. Signed this 25th day of June in the year 2019. And I'd like to invite everyone to participate in some food, some LGBT special colorful food outside that I brought myself. The next proclamation is for Officer Matt Young.
Proclamation, recognition of Reserve Officer Matt Young, June 25th, 2019. Whereas the Delray Oaks Police Department's mission is to support the mission of the city of Delray Oaks, professional law enforcement and responsive community service, and whereas the vision of the Delray Oaks Police Department is to be a model small-town police department, and whereas the core values of the Delray Oaks Police Department are service, dedication, and accountability, and whereas the police officers of the Delray Oaks Police Department are the driving force in modeling the department's mission, vision, and values, and whereas between April 1997 and May 2019, the city of Delray Oaks has a privilege of being served by Officer Matt Young, a law enforcement professional that serves as both a full-time and as a reserve officer, and who display the character, professionalism, and loyalty necessary to live up to his standards. Whereas Officer Matt Young retired from the Delray Oaks Police Department after over 20 years of service, now, therefore, be resolved that I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim the city of Delray Oaks appreciation for the service of Officer Matt Young and the contributions he has made to the safety, welfare, and quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors.
It's kind of a bittersweet day here for our police department because we officially recognized Matt's return. Matt served here from 1996 through 2019, from 1999 through 2015, he was a full-time police officer for us. And then, I was lucky enough to get him to apply back with us in 2017 and for the last two years, he decided to finish out his career under my administration, which has just been a privilege for me. I don't know how it's been for him, but great for me. Mayor, as you were reading the proclamation, I see you skipped a part where whereas, and this is a term Matt told me, Matt Young is the mayor of Man Town. (Laughter). I heard that when I walked in with a 7-Eleven burrito one day for lunch because I had no time for anything else and said, "Chief, that is Man Town." So, he's also retiring as the mayor of Man Town. But I just wanted to thank his wife, Cheryl. I was like, "There you are." Video taken. Thank you for letting us have him back. Thank you for letting us work with him and see how hard and diligent he works. People told me, when I asked about his service and if we wanted him back, and to a person, yes, he is the hardest-working police officer in town. And I believe that he came in when he had been retired on duty and he was pulling people over and making 10-pound marijuana traffic stops. And that's no lie. I'm sure he had just a little bit of... So, Mayor, on behalf of the department, the officers who are here, and I'm sure the city council and the city manager. Thank you. Right on. (Applause). Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. We really have. Thanks. All right. (Applause). I believe this is the longest public comment I've ever heard. Next, we have more of a, not a bittersweet, but a very sweet and happy occasion. I am honored and proud to officially swear in our newest officer. Officer Brian Perez has been here for a couple of months going through training and we've missed a couple of city council meetings with timing and everything else, but now's our official time to publicly recognize Officer Perez. Officer Perez is a 16-year veteran of the Westminster Police Department. While he was there, he was assigned to patrol and detectives, fraud, and special investigations. He was a SWAT team member and FTO who's on the Honor Guard and he was a range master for the firearms department. Along with his service as a police officer, Brian has served in the United States Marine Corps since 1998 until now. Currently, he's with the Civil Affairs Unit at Camp Pendleton as a detachment officer in charge. He has been recently promoted to Lieutenant Colonel of the Marine Corps Reserve. He's had two deployments to Afghanistan as a police advisory officer in charge leading a team of 25 Marines embedded with the Afghan Unithrung Police Force. Here today, he has his mom, Vicki, his grandmother, and his daughter Samantha, his son Brandon, and a family friend, Riley Campos. Unfortunately, his wife could not be here as Brian has just relocated from downtown Southern California. And he is in it here at the city of Delray Oaks. He is all in. He purchased a house here in La Raya and he's going to be here hopefully for a long while I don't know what happened. So, I would like to invite Brian out and I would like to give him his hold of office officially and then we'll have his badge handed. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Hi, State Attorney.
Hi, Brian Perez.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the state of California...
And the state of California.
...that I will bear true faith in... That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of California.
And the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully execute.
And that I will well and faithfully execute.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Before I ask his mom, Vicki, and his grandmother to come on here, come up here to do the penning, I just want to take a second to point out that you have a police department that is attracting a higher quality of police officers than we ever have, and are getting better staff than we ever have. And I'd like to thank the city manager for his support in allowing us to work on our vision. We want to be a model small-town police department, nothing more or nothing less. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for supporting us, whether it's budget or the operations that we do to make it safer, and just their support in the community in general. And the nice thing is that you as a community say less than support, so thank you very much. So if Vicki and Andy can come on up here, and we'll pin the badge on this fine officer. I thought you'd be the last to.
Yeah.
As the chief said, yeah, I recently purchased a house up here in the Monterey area, so I'm all in. I've flown on duty here for a very long time. Coming from Southern California, this is where I need to be in my career. Very busy down there, and it's not as busy up here. I want to be part of that effort to keep it that way. So love the area, I love this department, and I love the city, and my family and I are very happy to be up here now.
Welcome.
This is not on the agenda, but if you turn around. For how long? We've had a swearing-in ceremony, now we're going to have a swearing-at ceremony. Powell has been with us since I've come on board, he's been here approximately two years. Today was his last day with Delray Oaks. Normally, we don't care if that door hits him right on the way out. When they've only been here a couple of years, that's kind of how the business goes. But Powell has been exceptional in his service as the city of Delray Oaks. You hear things about millennials, their work ethic, and although he did ask why a lot when we. He had the work ethic of two or three officers. He was exceptional. And the city of Delray Oaks, as I told their chief when they were looking at us, if you don't hire them, you're an idiot. Apparently, they're not an idiot, but I want to say so long, Powell, and thank you for everything you've done while you're here, and recognize for everything you've done for the city.
All right, now we're going to move on to staff reports, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow, these are loud. All right, so I'll start with our Public Works crews have removed fuel along South Boundary Road and along the Frog Pond where it abuts residences back there. Our crews have been cutting down tall grass, removing deadfall trees, and just generally trying to reduce the fire hazard as we embark into the dry season. So thanks for that, Ron. Ron continues to work single-handedly to make significant improvements on our parks. If you take a look at our volleyball court, at our basketball court, at our baseball field, all the improvements you see so far, and they're far from complete, are his hard work making our park more welcoming and more frankly pleasing to the eye, and more useful for everyone from little leaguers to sort of pick up basketball games to the people that want to play volleyball on a nice, safe, sand volleyball court. So again, great work, Public Works. Our street project is over, and I just want to, again, I want to thank Ron, I want to thank our city engineer, Sherman Lowe, and we've been receiving wonderful remarks. You know, you hear a lot of, if something's going wrong, you hear about it. If something might be going wrong, you hear about it. But oftentimes, you don't hear a lot about things that are going well. And I just want to thank the members of the public, the council, everybody that sort of pointed out the work that was done on the street reconstruction project, biggest one we've done in a, in a, in a long, long time maybe ever. And the crews were terrific. It's over, and great, great kudos to Public Works. In response to a letter that we received from the airport district requesting a general plan amendment, the city has set up two public workshops coming up to allow our residents and businesses to ask questions directly of the airport staff. We'll be noticing these on social media, our website, and the kiosks. But for your information, they are scheduled for Thursday, July 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, July 13th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. to try to allow different times, different days for folks that have work or other schedules that we can try to accommodate. Currently, they're scheduled for here in City Hall. We are looking at a couple of other venues that might accommodate larger groups, so we'll let you know once we lock the venue in. Denise Duffy, our on-call planning and environmental review consultant, is developing a scope of work and an application for that amendment, general plan amendment request, and we'll be sharing it with the airport when that's ready. In other news, we just had some great recognition of our PD, but just a couple of other things. Officer Baza, towards the end of the school year, as kids were wrapping up, met a group of children from Delray Woods Elementary down at NR Park, and it was really fun to see all the kids driving him insane and try to get access to his radios and drive away with the patrol car, and it was just really fun. And he was great. And just to make the point, it's great to see young people as well as adults look at the uniform, look at the badge as a thing of safety and welcoming. Certainly, the ethic and ethos that Chief Hoin and our PD inspire. Several officers from our PD provided valuable information on identity theft to some of our parishioners at our church, and that was highly regarded by Father Helleman and others there. We had a housing element workshop on June 6th that was conducted by Denise Duffy and well-attended and was sort of a kickoff to our housing element update, which we hope to have complete by the end of the calendar year. She will be coming back to the city council for a public hearing in the fall when she has a draft housing element to share. And finally, this is the greatest news of the night for me. Thanks in no small part to Councilmember Gagliotti, who is our FORA board representative, to our budget committee comprised of Mayor Kerr, Councilmember Getzel, and Dennis Allian in the back, and the approval of the entire council. We were able to get approval from FORA to repay, restructure the loan that we owe them to pay only the principal and forgive all interest on a payment schedule over the next year. And I'm clapping on the inside. That'll save the city approximately $150,000 in interest. So great, great, you know, thank you, council, and everyone that's pulled that across the finish line. We'll begin making those payments after FORA goes through what is largely a symbolic but necessary second vote, since the initial vote wasn't unanimous. There was one dissenting vote requiring a second vote in July, and then we'll start making those payments. So, Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, now it's time for the mayor and council reports. I'd like to start with Mr. Gagliotti.
So it was a busy month. On Monterey One, there were two meetings, the Recycled Water Committee and the board meeting. The Recycled Water Committee recommended for approval about $6 million in several capital project efforts that are other than the recycled water project that we all know, the Pure Water Monterey. Some history about the Monterey One is Monterey One used to just collect sewer water and storm water, then treat it and send it up to the bay, but then about 25 years ago, in response to doing something to offset the long-term seawater intrusion issue, Monterey One began to look for ways to lightly clean up their affluent waters and then make them safe for crop irrigation. And those projects were the Castroville Seawater Intrusion Project, the SECP, and the Salinas Valley Reclamation Project, the SVRP. The combined facilities produce about 18 million gallons of water, of recycled water, a day, and they irrigate 12,000 acres of farmland at the mouth of the Salinas Valley. The capacity that they built is actually up to 30 million gallons per day, but we lack the source waters to actually use that full capacity. The latest expansion facilities and the support for the $6 million was put towards was in support of the Salinas Stormwater Grant, which, as the name implies, is to collect storm water and then convey it to Monterey One, return water pipeline, and process it to for secondary use. The board meeting was light, and that was last night. We approved a $63 million operating budget for next year, and we memorialized the process of publishing delinquent customers' names and amounts in the Herald. And you'll be happy to know that no one on the city council was on that. I attended the Notice of Preparation, NOP, meeting for the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Backup Plan on Wednesday, June 5th, at the Old Meyer Center. It was very informative and a spirited discussion. I represented Monterey One Board at the Advanced Water Purification Facility Tour for what was largely members of Public Water Now and other interested members of the community. The mayor was there in attendance, and I encourage any and all of you to take this tour. It's very impressive. It's an example of doing more with less and using our scarce resources more efficiently. I have also the contact person if you guys are interested in taking that tour to contact, so I brought these cards in for that. The Seaside Water Basin Master Board, I finally got to attend one, and as water board meetings go, it was awesome to give kind of a big picture of our water system on the peninsula. And the public, the two people that were coming mentioned this, or at least brought some light to this, is that right now, if you take a snapshot of our water system on the peninsula, we mine about 68% to 70% of our water out of the Carmel Valley, or Carmel River. And then we do the same for the Seaside Water Basin, which is about 20% to 23%, and then we pump into the basin surplus Carmel Valley River water when we have it, and then we pump it out. We have to pump it out that year that we capture it, and that's about 7%. And then we also desalinate about 200 acre feet of water from San City. And that's about, that represents about 2% of our water, and that's the snapshot of what our water system looks like today. Starting in the winter, we'll be producing and pumping into that basin, into the Seaside Water Basin, 3,500 acre feet of water of recycled water from the Pure Water Monterey Project. And then somewhere between 90 to 180 days of that first water, we will curtail pumping out of the river exactly that much, which is about halving what we are taking out of the river's waters today, which is a huge, huge, it's our first big step in our sustainable water future on the peninsula. Every subsequent new water source of water that comes online, be it DSal, or Pure Water Monterey Expansion, or some form of both, will first be pumped into the basin. So the basin, the Seaside Water Basin, is an absolutely critical piece to our future water system, keeping it clean, free of seawater, and safely filled so that it doesn't subside or collapse, is absolutely vital. So in my first Water Master Meeting, it was discussed the pros and cons of the current metric used to measure production of the basin. All of the current contracts and adjudication of the basin use the term "safe yield." This is, there is a growing use in groundwater management of a more complex measure called "sustainable yield." And as one might expect, sustainable yield is less than safe yield. However, it's not a one-to-one comparison. It's not just a straight conversion of numbers. What sustainable yield accounts for is hydrogeology and specific locations of production wells, solely dependent upon that water feature. The basin, in all of its findings, from the Groundwater Sustainability Act efforts, which are going on right now in the Salinas Valley, currently, those are currently in study, will eventually be reported in sustainable yield production numbers. It gets very complicated for our basin at the southeast boundary of where the Salinas Valley meets the Seaside Basin, which is right around Toro Park. When all the modeling is finished, it could make sense that a high-volume production well somewhere near Ryan Ranch or South Boundary Road would create a hydraulic wall that would shore up the integrity of the Seaside Water Basin. For Delray Oaks, it could mean a sustainable water, or sustainable water infrastructure where there is not one today. So stay tuned on that one. For FORA, we had a regular meeting on the 14th, and then I took notes for Dino at the admin meeting on the 19th. It was a huge week for Delray Oaks, as Dino just mentioned. And then Association, Dino, I attended the Association of Defense Communities, I don't know why I can't say it, Association of Defense Communities in DC on June 10th and June 12th. We got a chance to catch up with Congressman Panetta regarding his support for FORA and what that means for the sustainability of Delray Oaks. As popular it is in this community to kind of disparage FORA, what it has accomplished in helping Marina and Seaside transition for base communities to thriving education, commercial, recreation, and residential communities is seen nationally as a huge success. Dino and I attended the Land Use Authority Board, which is kind of an executive board of all these land use authorities, and Monterey and Atlanta were by far holdouts of what I would call the successful sword-to-plowshare story. I also attended the Monterey Bay Drone Automation Robotics Technical or Technology Conference. This was amazing. Congressman Panetta opened the proceedings in here, but what was really, really exciting to see was the open-source resource in swarm technology coming out of NPS. Last summer, they conducted successfully a follow-the-leaders swarm of two groups of 50 autonomous drones flying around Hunter Ligon. And they had it on video, and they looked like starlings moving in response. And the thought in my mind was Blade Runner in that if these hunters and Cuisinarts basically just got into their mind that they wanted to take it to the man, they could have just really done, really have it. NPS, this is what's amazing, NPS is distilled down to the brick level. They have the hardware, it's already built, with about $200 of off-the-shelf hardware, a swarm module that can be dropped into a flying robot, a submersible robot, a land vehicle, and it's just incredible that that's being developed right here down the road.
I attended the Northern Salinas Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board Meeting. I reported that we were looking at some property since we're in a ground lease with the city of Salinas and the building they're currently at, the Salinas Airport. Unfortunately, the building we were looking at, that did not pan out, so we're continuing to look for a new home. Also, we approved the budget for next year. That was pretty much the extent of that board meeting. I attended the Ambag meeting. They had a very, very good presentation by Tim, I'm going to butcher his name, Goncharov, Goncharov. He's the Santa Cruz County Department of Public Works, a very good presentation on protecting Monterey Bay Marine, National Marine Sanctuary from plastic pollution, the steps that Santa Cruz County has taken. from plastic pollution, the steps that Santa Cruz County has taken and a lot of the cities around the bay are also taking. And one thing that I learned that was very surprising, just the day before the meeting and his presentation, there was an article in the paper and reports on the microplastics found in Monterey Bay. And what really surprised me is that, it's going to shock you, a lot of the microplastics come from our clothes. When we wash our clothes, our polyester clothing, those little tiny itty-bitty microfibers go down the drain and they go into the bay. There are filters that can be purchased to go on your washing machine drain hose to capture some of those. I've not looked into those, but I was very, very shocked on how much just our washing, our non-natural fibers adds to pollution. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Lintell?
Thank you. Just as a follow-on to the wonderful things that were said about our police department, and Dino mentioned the identity theft presentation that was given at the Church of the Oaks. Sergeant Roger and Officer Brian, Brian was the one who just got his new star tonight, gave a presentation that was a great help to many there. Because of the questions that were asked, it was an audience that really needed this information. Many of them seemed oblivious to how to handle this, or that they were being taken advantage of. Both of the officers, they fielded the questions with great clarity and completeness, and so thank you to both of the officers, as well as to Chief Hine. I attended the Seaside Sanitation Board Meeting, where we rejected all the previous bids for the Canyon Delray Sewer Line Upgrades Project. Due to the high cost, there will be a redesign and a request for new bids. We approved the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year ending 2020, and we also considered the proposed budget, taking public input and approved the resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 annual operating budget. Pure Water Monterey, which John covered quite thoroughly, I attended that meeting also. And MST, as ultimate, I attended the MST Board Meeting. Dave Biecksker, I'm not certain how to pronounce his name, he was recognized as Employee of the Month for June of 2019. There was also a recognition of Ann Armbruster, who is, excuse me, retiring after being a coach operator for 40 years. Her outstanding dedication and contribution to MST and the entire community was organized. I'm so impressed with MST, the way that they honor their employees, and it just creates a nice family because they are recognized, and I think it's just an outstanding corporation. At that meeting, the board approved the disadvantaged business enterprise statement policy revision, adopted Resolution 2019-34, authorizing MST CEO, who is Carl Sidurk, who is a Delray Oaks resident, and to submit and execute all required documents of the microgrid Smart Connect program through Monterey Bay Community Power. We approved a new seven-day basic pass at a price of $25 regular and 12 discount with an upcharge of $1.450 discount for regional routes and $9.50 for 75 discount for commuter routes. And the board received an update via PowerPoint presentation on the Salinas Valley Express Transit Corridor Planning Study. And finally, the board approved the fiscal year 2020 operating and capital budget, acting plan, and staffing levels, and authorizing grant applications and funding requests. Community Human Services, I have two months to report on that because the May meeting was held after the City Council meeting last month, so here we go. I attended the postponed CHS Community Human Services May meeting, which was held after Robin McCray, who is the CEO, announced that the Community Human Services received the Excellence in Education Award for Monterey County School Boards Association. Also, Community Human Services and Gathering for Women received the grant for the homeless shelter in Seaside. Several action items were passed as follows. Job description and salary placement for the new position Parent Education Program. The revision to the Councilor Two Safe Place Basic Center Program job description. The revisions to the commercially sexually exploited children Advocate Domestic Violence Group Facilitator job description, and leasing a car for the Safe Passage Program. Following the May meeting, we held our Strategic Planning Retreat, and we discussed all the internal and external strengths and weaknesses, and our 2018-19 achievements and progress were reviewed. Many new ideas were presented for the future. It was a very productive meeting. Now, we have the June meeting. At the June meeting, the Nominee Committee recommended the new officers, and the board approved. Alana Miles is the new chair. Alana is resident of Delray Oaks. And Kyle Samuels is vice chair, and Annette Ye Stic is finance chair. We received an excellent presentation on pathways to safety. Pathways received recommendations from child, pathways receives recommendations from child service, child protective services, families which need help. It's maybe a neighbor reports that their next-door neighbor is not getting the food that they need, or maybe there's just problems with the child abuse or sexual problems. Anyway, then they get reported to by the neighbors, et cetera, to the child protective services, who then recommend to the pathways. I attended the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group, where we discussed the upcoming garage sale, which will be held July 27th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Kim will be printed, Kim or Karen will be present. Printer and the fryers and the Pontiac Express will be delivering one to your doorstep. Hope you all plan to participate in this. It's really a fun event, and get to meet lots of new people. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Clark?
I'd like to add from that, that I think George is looking for people to help him. So, if anybody wants to volunteer for, I think, picking up money, especially on the other side, see George, because he's looking for volunteers. Pat sat in for me, for MST, and she's going to be sitting in for me again next month. Also, I'm going to be going on our annual vacation that we take at the same time every year. I left for the U.S. Open, the chaos that was here, and I can tell you all about how to pin up Petit Syrah vines, because that's what I did. I thinned the Cabernet. We have a vineyard up north, and so I've been learning a lot about managing a vineyard lately. That's it.
All right. So, before I get started, I just wanted, Ron has left, but I've been spending a lot of time down in the park. And the other day, it was so exciting because I saw three dads and about six kids in the baseball field, you know, hitting balls and stuff, so that made me very happy. So, we had a regular What's On Your Mind meeting with a couple, yet again, a couple of new folks, and we're talking about whatever people want to talk about. I was also honored to be invited to celebrate the end of Ramadan with our local Islamic community. Like all festive holidays, we enjoyed great food, kids were having a blast running amok, and it was a very colorful, special event. Mayor Carbone and Bogusby were also in attendance. It was a special, it was a nice event to attend. After that, I also went to the Housing Element Workshop. So, we are really fortunate to have Denise Duffy on our team to help guide us through this long overdue process, with great timing, lots of good input and thoughts from residents, and looking forward to the next steps. On June 7th, a very busy day on June 7th. It started off meeting Senator Mohny. He asked to meet with me as a check-in to see how Delray Oaks is happening, and we discussed regional water and the airport, the FORA sunsetting. He's very concerned about sea level rise, so we talked a little bit about that. That same day was the regularly scheduled mayor's meeting, and this month it was in Cornell. Assemblyman Stone was there, and he provided an update on working in Sacramento with a new governor and a new team, as well as having a healthy budget and tension with our federal government. So, in particular, we discussed concerns about climate change, on and offshore drilling. Yes, and leadership from the Monterey County Census were also there, and they briefed us on upcoming requirements, so make sure you're counted. I have been discussing with each of the peninsula mayors, the need for us to provide a unified voice on various matters that concern the peninsula residents. And so, after the lunch with the mayors, with the full Monterey County mayors, we had a smaller meeting with just the peninsula mayors. Mayor Carbone and Monterey Clyde Roberson, Bill Peak from Pacific Grove, and Dave Potter from Carmel joined. I don't know what it is yet, but we're looking at various topics that we can all come together on. So, in addition to the census, other topics that came up are single-use plastics and responsible tourism. So, there's a lot of things that we can do together on that, and that conversation will be ongoing. So, that's an exciting, emerging partnership. Later that afternoon, I met with Monterey Peninsula Regional Water District and Pure Monterey Water Leadership to discuss possible collaboration with Monterey and Seaside on stormwater runoff capture, a flow that currently goes into the ocean from Lake Roberts. We all own, or that water all goes through each of our cities, so that partnership is interesting. The main outcome of that was there's so much going on right now with water that we're going to revisit it once the feasibility study comes out and see what kind of happens with the DSal plan. But that could be another little segment of water for our city. I attended a resident gathering, talking about the airport, lots of passion, and I think there will be some more of those. Additionally, I attended the quarterly meeting of Communities for Sustainable Monterey. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a Sustainable Monterey, Sustainable Seaside in each group, focus on, focuses on their own city's needs, ordinances, plastic ordinances. And there was a large push for Monterey Bay Community Power when it was coming out. So, the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Sustainability actually attended the quarterly meeting, and they were accepted into the fold as sustainable Delray Oaks. So, co-chairs Karen Harris back there and Kim Shirley will be leading the effort at this point forward. So, they will now be a 501(c)(3), and they will be hopefully setting a meeting with the city manager here very soon to figure out how they can help support city efforts. I'm proud of these guys for doing their work to make our city healthier. Mayor's Advisory Committee for Arts and Culture continues to grow. I think we have about nine folks, and they have settled on a mission and are beginning to identify potential projects. I think we can all look forward to some exciting events, again, working with our city manager to see what we may be able to do to supplement all the Citizens Action Committee activities as well. As Councilwoman Gagliotti mentioned, I attended the Pure Water Monterey Tour last Friday. Highly suggest going and seeing the sophisticated machinations of everything out there, and the ability to take some amazingly disgusting water and make it very yummy. I mean, we're all walking around with our little cups, but I think it's really important as the region continues to struggle with our water issues, to understand what is going on with, you know, the 3,500 acre feet that they're going to replace, you know, some of the Carmel River with the possibility of the additional 2,250. So, I would definitely do that. So, I don't know if you're aware, but we will not be having a July meeting, so the next meeting will be in August. So, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Similar to Councilwoman Lintell, the timing, for some reason, May and June were off, and so I didn't have a TMC meeting, but I'm going tomorrow morning. So, that's a transportation agency of Monterey County that's responsible for all this construction going on right now. So, they're responsible for all the bike lanes, and they were responsible for the funding for our repaving. So, I can report about that in August. Additionally, the Monterey, or the Water Authority, the mayor's Water Authority hasn't met for a little while, and so we'll be meeting on Thursday to discuss next year's budget. There's been a little shift, the executive director recently, or will be resigning as of this meeting on Thursday. So, we need to figure out, again, with all the issues going on around water, how and if that continues, and how we support and what we support as far as the community water. I wanted to also mention, on Thursday, there's a four-tag public scoping meeting. The first one is at, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Black Horse, and 6:00 to 8:00 at the Marina Library. It's kind of the four-tag at-large. We've had our own for the segment that goes through Delray Oaks. But if you're concerned or you want to learn more, I would highly suggest going to those meetings. We mentioned the airport meetings on July 11th and July 13th. Next month's What On Your Mind may need to be moved due to August, due to vacation that I'll be taking, and airport meetings and some other meetings that are happening on Saturday, so I'll let people know that. Delray Oaks will be hosting all of the Monterey County mayors in July. So, this is our monthly meeting, and we'll be doing it in Delray Oaks, and Karen is creating a really fun event. We will be meeting in the park. So, now for something completely different for our mayors. So, that looks like that. And then lastly, I just want to say, make sure you sign up for the garage sale. It is a fun event for the city. It's been going on for a long time, and it has quite the reputation. So, we just want to support. If you're not going to sign up, at least go shop. So, on that note, thank you very much. So, now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone, anyone in the public or anyone on the City Council want to poll any item? I just want to, item C3, which is approve a social media policy. So, that was the item that was revised a little bit. There were just a couple of clarifying statements in regards to members of the City Council engaging in social media sites and things like that, and so it was just a couple, just a couple of clarifying terms that were added. So, other than that, I will, yes?
What were the?
Okay. So, if you look at J on page two, it says, "City's social media site shall be managed consistent with the Brown Act," the Political Reform Act. consistent with the Brown Act," the Political Reform Act, and the California Election Code. Members of the city council, we added, "Planning Commission." And city advisory bodies shall not respond to any published postings or use any, and we added, "City-sponsored social media sites." And that was it.
Page one, we added, "City-sponsored events."
Got it. So, and going back to page one, number 3A, it originally said, "The city will maintain citywide accounts on various platforms that will be used to disseminate city news," and we added, "and city-sponsored events." So for example, Citizens' Action Committee items and things like that, just for clarity. Any questions?
No, 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 that's fine.
I'll entertain a motion to, for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
With the revise.
With revise the social media policy.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. We have no old business. Our new business, A, consider Section 115 trust deposit. I'll turn that over to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. For the item before you, council, is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing an initial deposit of $150,000 into the moderately conservative investment portfolio of the Section 115 trust administered by PARS to pre-fund our pension and other post-employment benefit obligations, and to authorize city manager to execute documents in accordance. Essentially, this accelerates the decision that the council's made around our budget to fully fund our unfunded liability for PARS within 10 years. So this starts at this fiscal year rather than next fiscal year. It does so with revenues, salary savings that we realized from a police contract as we ramped up the number of police officers, but we're receiving, but have money budgeted for 11 officers. And so we'll slide some of that money into this trust and begin accruing interest at approximately 4.5% based on the portfolio performance to date. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any council questions, comments?
Yeah, how long is that 4.5% locked in?
Yeah, it's not locked in. Yeah, so it's a great question. So it's a low-risk investment portfolio, which means it will yield what it yields. It has yielded approximately 4.5% over the last couple of years, and so that's what we're using as a sort of a potential return on investment going forward. And I've broken down in more detail inside the packet. Frankly, my instinct is to go with a higher risk to bring in more yield, but these are taxpayer dollars. This is a little bit more money than in return than we would make, certainly more than PARS is making with their investment portfolio.
It's 1.2.
Right, so it's roughly, you know, four times, three and a half times that rate. And certainly, it's a pleasure of the council to go with a higher risk. We can do that. At this point, I think we start, my recommendation to you at this time is, we start out with this moderately conservative portfolio, get some time under our belts with this vehicle, and we can certainly modify in the future. By the way, you can modify this anytime.
Yeah. Is it just the suite of investment, I guess, opportunities within that 115 trust?
Right, it's the suite offered by PARS, this organization that we've gone with to manage the trust and their product line.
This is jogging my memory, yeah. Those guys came in. So I mean, even the high-risk, the high-risk ones are still pretty conservative. They're still pretty safe. Pretty safe.
Yeah, I'm with you on that. I'm fine with where it is in the public. Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions?
Well, another comment, I just think that I'd much rather stay with conservative. It is public money, and I think that, you know, easy come, easy go. We've seen that, you know, things take a turn for the worse. And, you know, I'd rather be conservative.
I agree. I think we're at a high. And I think, yeah, and I've been anticipating a drop for a while. And so I would hate to use our first-time investment and lose too much.
Completely agree.
Are there any public comments?
I guess I missed where it's looking for public comment on the agenda.
On the beginning.
But it happens.
We had public comment.
It says that only on things not on the agenda, and then it says we can speak individuals on agenda at the time that it's being said.
I didn't ask for a public comment.
Did anybody wanted to poll? Is that your discretion whether you'd like to?
Can we do that in just a minute?
Absolutely.
We need to have this conversation. But you're correct, I asked if anyone wanted to poll, but I did not indicate public comment. So let us finish this first.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll call you up.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So any public comment on the Section 15 trust deposit? Public comment closed?
To approve.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Section 15 trust deposit has been approved unanimously. So we will not be discussing new business B, and there's no correspondence, and there's no closed session. So before we wrap up to the next meeting, anyone have anything, any public comment about a consent agenda item?
Yes, like I'm saying, I delivered something earlier, the covenant agreement, the 31 argument place, the lack of proof, in case the full council would receive it. So you have, so part of the entire landscaping project was entered.
Yeah, can you tell us your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Margaret Hammer, and I own the property at the 21th Hall in the building. So part of this entire project was the wall that was modified in the back, and it's a massive wall, it's very long, and it holds up the, it's a wall between our two properties. So of course, I'm very concerned. I had a general contractor come out and look at it, and his opinion was that it was failing. I showed him the modifications to the wall, and he said that it would have definitely required permitting and engineering, and because of the height and the fact that it's already failing, he was very concerned about the added stress to the wall with those two, the additional height, the two additional blocks that are added in the corner and on the side, as well as down the length of the wall. So I was just hoping that since it's part of this whole project, there would be no reason for the city to be in a hurry about granting the covenant agreement until the issue with the wall is brought to code and released research, because in his opinion, it was a code violation, and definitely there was a structural issue. And as I mentioned, the walls are already failing. So I would hope that the council would consider that in making a decision, because that wasn't fresh permitted construction. The other things were, there was an original permit for the stuff in the front, and I was told that the city attorney had pulled it from the agenda from the planning commission meeting. We caged that meeting and it was canceled. But then I was told later that it had been pulled from the agenda, because the city attorney had determined that they need to go through the permitting process. But certainly, the modification to this wall would have required some review and permitting help.
Can I subcut, I guess, a point of order? How we, first of all, is the sidewalk covenant connected to this issue? Are they, they're not? Okay, so I think then we're safe on the consent, but we should address this.
Yeah, ma'am.
Yes, please.
May I respond? Because it's my retaining.
She can, of course, you can public comment.
Please, yes.
I have a permit.
Can I have you come up here and let us know who you are?
Norma Walsh.
Hi, Norma.
I'm Walsh. I have a permit for the little addition to the retaining wall. Has been approved? It's done.
That's part of the yard. Now, we talked about what is that.
So am I.
So a public comment is you had your three minutes, and now you have your three minutes, and then city manager has a comment. Please, Norma.
I have the permit for the wall. I have signed off everything. The wall is built, the extra little addition. In addition, I, my property extends five feet beyond the retaining line. Therefore, I don't see why Mrs. Hammer is here complaining about it. The whole thing is on my property.
Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor and council, we received a complaint earlier today. We will refer to our building official. The building official will take a look at it. He may or may not contact the property owner after reviewing the documents. Having said all that, it's a separate matter from what's being entertained tonight, has no bearing on the covenant agreement tonight. And my recommendation to you is that you consider it a separate matter, that you're not considering, because it is a separate matter that the staff will take action on and that you act independently on the matter of the covenant agreement.
Totally agree with that recommendation.
And we did that already.
Do you want me to make that motion? Do we need to make a motion, or do we just stick to the recommendation?
Consent's done.
Yeah, no, consent's done, but I was saying, but this is a non-agendized item, that there was a recommendation to stand.
You don't need it. We're going to do it with them, we're good. It's a staff action.
All right, that were good.
Okay, so are you clear? Is everybody clear about what's?
Yeah.
Do I have the covenant agreement?
Yes, covenant agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So our next meeting date is Tuesday, August 27th at 6:00 p.m. Please note, we will not be here in July. And on that note, please join us for some. So it was just noted that we, the council does a strategic planning all-day event where public is welcome to come. You can't participate, but you can watch. So I would invite you to join us that day as well, and then 6 o'clock that evening, we'll have the council meeting. So on that note, we're adjourned.